Altogether, the study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for May fourth, two thousand and twenty. Thank you for joining us. We will start with citizen comment on agenda items. All of our citizens should be unmuted at this time, and I'm going to ask if there's any citizens out there who would like to comment on agenda items. Please ask to be recognized, and I will recognize you, and if you would give us your first name, last name, your address, and then you will have three minutes. So is there members of the public who would like to speak tonight on agenda items?
Mayor, I don't see any participants on the line.
Okay, so we have no hands up. Okay. Well, I'm going to ask one more time. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on any agenda items? You may do so now. Just speak up, and I will recognize you. Okay, I don't hear any, so we will close our citizen comment and go to our agenda item number one. This is the two thousand and twenty census, and I'll like to go to Ally Scheck to introduce this for us.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Good evening, Ally Scheck, Administrative Services Director. My thanks to the, our US Census Bureau Partnership Specialist, Christian LeBron Leon, who is here tonight to give us a brief update, along with Lily Griego, our partnership coordinator and Wheat Ridge resident. And Christian will give us an update. The pandemic has affected census operations from a timing perspective pretty significantly, and in what I believe to be an unprecedented way. I don't believe there's ever been a case where the census has been delayed. And so tonight you'll hear from Christian initially about what the delays mean, how that will affect us, and then both Lily and I are here to answer questions. I'm happy to answer questions specifically about how that might affect our our operations here in Wheat Ridge. I will just give an update. There's a slight update from the the staff memo that that we prepared. So as of today, the Wheat Ridge response rate is sixty nine point four percent. So we're doing good every day. Every day we get more and more in terms of that self-response. But at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Christian. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Let me share my screen here. All right, so like you mentioned, we're going to discuss a little bit about the timeline from the census, the new timeline. I'm going to discuss a little bit of some statistics that I have for you. But let me introduce myself first. I have worked for the US Census for a year and a half now. Not with the city of Wheat Ridge. I have worked with Denver and other areas here in Colorado, like the consulates and unions and labor associations. So another partnership specialist who moved to another position within the Department of Commerce, Christian, who by the way shares the same name as me, just with a K, he did a great job with Wheat Ridge, and I'm trying to do my best to fill those shoes. So Lily Griego will be part of the presentation. If you haven't, if I'm not able to answer any question, if she wants to add anything else, you'll jump in and talk. So the city of Wheat Ridge has two websites, it is my understanding. One is the engagement and the C Wheat Ridge webpage. And Allison updated the, all the dates that I'm going to talk about in those websites. So they're available already, and so the public has access to them. So the self-response phase, meaning the audience will have the opportunity to respond through online, phone, mail, paper census. They have now until October thirty first to answer, to fill the census. There was, the census had planned for me, for partnership specialists and others, to do what is called a mobile questionnaire assistance, meaning I was going to be available with a tablet, and they will send me to a supermarket, and I'll help the public fill the census. As you can see here, in the revised section here, right now we don't have a date per se to start that operation, but hopefully in the near future, hopefully in June, we will be available to assist the public and, like I said, assist them with their questionnaire, but yeah, the tablet. Let's talk about group quarters. Group quarters are places in which people live in groups, basically. So for example, prisons, nursing homes, hospitals. For group quarters, they have two options to fill the form. One is in person, in which the census will send someone there to interview each person who lives there, or they can do it what it is called e-response, meaning they have the option to fill it online. They can do it in a spreadsheet, for example, and provide that via email to the census, or they can fill the forms and then provide those forms to the census. At this point, the city of Wheat Ridge has a total of thirty group quarters. As you can see here, thirteen of them are working with the census right now and doing the forms via e-response. The remaining five of them, the census hasn't been able to make contact with them. And then the others, they're going to submit the form by different means, like spreadsheets, or they're going to fill the form, and then someone will pick the forms. So I have, I can't get the list of all those group quarters. So if someone needs that list, I can provide it. And maybe we can, to increase the percentage of self-response, maybe we can contact those group quarters and see if they can, maybe they're already committed to do it by paper, but maybe they can do it by e-response, and that way we can increase the self-response in Wheat Ridge. Then there's service-based enumeration, and these are people that are in shelters, go to food bands and different places, and right now, we have, we don't have a set date. What we're doing is working directly with those shelters, like I said, and food bands and other places for them to provide us the information that we need. Also, we have a homelessness enumeration. Same thing, we're identifying right now the new homeless shelters because of the COVID nineteen and determining where we should go or contact these places, so that way we can gather all the information that we need. It is to be determined date right now. Like I said, we're working on that right now. As soon as we have the specific days, I'll provide it. Maybe twelve, so in the near future, I can give you an update. Then we have enumeration of subsidiary locations. So we're talking about campgrounds, RV hotels. We have a revised date of September three through September twenty eighth. This tentative, the same thing, if that changes, I'll provide a new date. We have update leave, in which census takers leave the forms, the actual census forms, or the letters explaining to them how they can access the website for them, or the phones for them to fill the form. Right now, the revised dates are June thirteen through July nine. And then there's non-response follow-up, and these are people that haven't filled the form. And then the census will send people to different places to see if they need help to fill the form. The revised date right now is August eleven through October thirty first. I'm going to see if Lily.
I can jump in if you want, Christian. So thank you so much for going through the operational adjustments. These two are very important for the mayor and the council to be aware of, because with the changes, and Allison was so gracious to mention this at the very beginning, we are seeing unprecedented changes in a lot of different arenas, but now we're also going to see it with regard to the census. So how does that impact the city of Wheat Ridge? Two things. Number one, all the dates that Christian just went over are operational changes that we have made internally. This is a done change. It's approved by our leadership in the Census Bureau. And this is the new field timeline based on health and safety, not only of everyone in Wheat Ridge, but also of our employees, many of whom live and reside in Wheat Ridge as well, that we hire locally. So the two pieces here that are not done, so to speak, they have to go to Congress for approval, are these two things, and this impacts redistricting down to the local level. And I'll draw your attention to that we don't deal with redistricting. I'm not hired to work on redistricting. Neither is Christian. We are going to do the count that provides the data for redistricting at the state level. So where the state of Colorado and cities like Wheat Ridge are really anxious to get this data back depends on that accuracy and completeness of the count itself. So the two things that we are proposing to change in Congress are the dates where we submit our data to the White House. You can see on there, December thirty first has now been changed to April thirtieth. And again, this is not a done deal yet. The second one is immediately thereafter that data is processed and turned back over to the states for the purposes of redistricting. So now, since we bumped that out by a hundred and twenty days, logically, we would take that next date and also bump that out by a hundred and twenty days. Congress has the ultimate approval. So I work on outreach for three states to include Colorado, but I do outreach for congressional offices for our entire region, for twelve states. We took this message to Congress, we, meaning the Census Bureau. We updated all the members of Congress last Thursday and Friday. We stay in close contact with the in-district offices to field questions coming from their constituents, of which y'all are part of CD seven, or Congressional District Seven. And we're making sure that all of the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted before we take this to a bill. The way this will be introduced in Congress is a formal bill for approval from the House of Representatives and from the US Senate. This may be a standalone bill, or it may be included as part of another bill. When that happens, we will come back to the mayor and to Allison and say, FYI, this is now in a bill headed to Congress. We'll give you that bill number, and then that way you can review the language. We are not proponents or opponents of any of the language included in it. We give that back to you to review at your discretion. And then if you have concerns or questions or support measures, you would want to look to your congressional members, of which those would be congressional member Pearl Mutter, also US Senator Michael Bennett, and US Senator Cory Gardner. And with that, Christian, let's kick it over to self-response rates and talk about that for just a minute. And then we'll wrap up with showing you where, two things, celebrating success, but I'm more focused on where do we have some work to do. So we'll just quickly walk through self-response rates and then look at a map where we have some work to do in Wheat Ridge.
Sure. So as I said before, the new dates for self-response are from March twelfth to October thirty first. So Wheat Ridge still has about five to six months to self-respawn from the census. So the national self-response rate, when I checked this morning, was fifty six point three percent. Colorado's self-response is fifty nine point seven. That increased a little bit in the afternoon. Currently, the city of Wheat Ridge self-response rate is sixty nine point two. So as a baseline, the final two thousand and ten self-response rate was seventy four point five. So we are about five percent from two thousand and ten. The self-response rate has increased an average of one point zero seven percent per day. And I got that data online, because the first statistic that I got, the census received was from March nineteen, two thousand and twenty. And then taking that sixty nine point two divided by forty seven, that equals one point zero seven percent, not including Saturdays and Sundays. So in theory, we're about, what, thirty percent? So I don't know, maybe in a month, we can have a one hundred percent, right? So apart from that, the highest track number is one zero five point zero four. That's the highest response rate is eighty four point four. Out of that, seventy eight percent is internet response. And then for your awareness, in two thousand and ten, that track had a response rate of eighty seven point three. So that's about three percent difference from two thousand and ten. And then the road.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Can we take them to the map so that they can see the track map? I apologize for the interruption. So this is our national map, and you can see the response rates. Let's go down to the census tract. I think Christian was good enough to also include the county. Perfect. So the darker blue on the bottom is where we want to get. You'll see on the lower left, we started with the zero to fifteen in that rust color. And you can see South Jeffco, the unincorporated area, has made its way into that forty one to fifty bracket. And you can see pieces of the county itself have already made its way into that kind of purplish mark seventy five to eighty five. Let's go to Wheat Ridge for us, Christian, if you have that available by any chance. Perfect. Okay, so I think that, and I love that Christian did this, he focused on the positives. So Apple, I was going to say Apple Ridge, excuse me, focusing to the west. So looking at the far west, those are our census tracks that are performing well. And I don't think any of you in the city council or the mayor are going to be shocked to hear along the Sheridan corridors, where we're seeing some lack of responses. I live in this area. So we need to think about a couple different things. How can we increase self-response in the census tracks that are lower performing? I have set a goal for our team of a ninety percent self-response rate for Colorado. These are some unprecedented numbers, but I think that we're dealing with a time when we have a captive audience. And I don't mean that in a joking manner whatsoever. I'm serious. We have families at home, and we also have a captive audience in understanding, what does it look like when we have emergency preparedness? And we need to prepare ourselves. We are literally on the last leg of the two thousand and ten census data that we're using in real time. So these numbers last us for the next decade. So I look to Allison really for some of the information left on your census supply, so to speak, that you have left from the grant. That's a decision for you all. But what I can say is that some communities are being really creative in their outreach methods to the census tracks that need to increase self-response, literally down to Globeville, right across the road here, is getting a truck with a blowhorn, and they're driving around telling this one small census tract. Now, I'm not telling you to do this, but they're literally taking it old school, and they're going when families are sitting down to dinner, and they're driving around with a big banner on the side of the truck in English and Spanish and shouting out, "It's time to respond to the census." And I think it's kind of cute. It is old school. I'm not, again, implying that you should do that. I'm implying that we should look at methods that increase our self-response rates so that we can, number one, be done with our messaging, number two, get a great response for Wheat Ridge, and number three, be prepared for what's coming down the road. So our message is to respond now. Sorry to cut you off there, Christian.
No, it's fine. Almost down here. So like you said, I mean, track one oh seven point oh two, that's the lowest response rate with fifty seven point three. In two thousand and ten, it was sixty two percent. So there's a six percent difference right now. And then that's basically it. I mean, right now, like Lily mentioned, we are basically doing everything virtually, having different newsletters, media, conferences, town halls. We're trying everything, anything, working with the different partnerships that we created to promote the census and make sure that we get a high response rate. Any questions? Go ahead.
So what are you suggesting that we do as a community to increase participation in some of those tracks? Or do you have any kind of suggestions?
So I will let Lily answer this. And she's, like I said, I don't use to work with Wheat Ridge, so I'm still learning a lot about Wheat Ridge, so I think Lily is the best person to answer that.
So we welcome any ideas. We can brainstorm outside of city council. What I can tell you that has been working is an increased community engagement, literally thinking outside of the box. So if you are doing, I saw, for as an example, I love that we got this question, you just did, at Pietrus, they had a drive-in movie theater. So what would have been fantastic, and we're trying to be everywhere where we can, and it's just challenging. So if you let us know about an event like that, I'll call up Pietrus, and I'll say, hey, let's give you the right messaging, and let's do a spiel about the census right before the movie starts, where you have, again, that captive audience sitting in their cars. You were there with your family and your children, and that's exactly what we want, is to engage families. And we want to share with people that are not likely to be aware of the importance of the census. It's really important to count children under the age of five. Those are the most likely missed population from two thousand and ten data. And to fill it out now. They can take out their phones. Pietrus could have offered like a coupon for a free pizza the very next time, if everybody would have taken out their phones, and maybe like the first person to complete it would have said, "I did it," you know, something fun like that. And so I think really driving home that Wheat Ridge message about what this means to us as a city, where we continue to grow. Our community is really engaged in what our city looks like, but we want to establish a pattern of routine of investing in our community by doing so simple as a census. The banner that y'all have as you pull in on thirty eighth and Sheridan, perfect. Driving that message wherever we can, social media. Also, if you all would consider holding some of your town hall messaging, maybe have one specifically on the census and talk about the different ways it touches our community over the next decade. So those are just a few ideas.
Thank you, Lily, and thank you, Christian. And Councilor Dozeman, I'll just add that we've, we have a complete count committee that the mayor convened last year, and we've been meeting. And at our last meeting, we talked about really getting to, starting to focus on those Easterleaf census tracks in districts one and two. And one of the things we have is we had an event planned funded by Together We Count, a Together We Count grant for ten thousand dollars that Karen's staff helped secure. And we, we're not sure that we're going to be able to have that event this year. And so we're working on some material for the grand tour to approve, us using that money differently. And that could be targeted mailing, a targeted mailing from you all that just lets people know, here's how you can go online right now and take your census. Like, at this point, if you've thrown out your, you know, your mail survey, or you've thrown out your own, you know, unique code, you can still go online and find your address and take the census. And, you know, doing things that the, you know, with, working with our community service officers to get door hangers out there, that sort of thing. So we've got some ideas in the works, so I'll be happy to come back and share that with council.
Thank you. Do we have additional questions? For Ms. LeBron, or Ms. Griego, or Ms. Scheck? Or the census in general? All right. Well, I want to thank you very much for joining us tonight. We really appreciate the update. We look forward to working more with you. We've got a great complete count committee. That's a mouthful, but but they do great work, and we're, we're really excited to sort of find some new techniques to get out and, and boost our census numbers. So thank you very much, Lily and Christian, for joining us. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much for all you're doing. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Okay, we will go to agenda item number two. This is our COVID nineteen response update with Jefferson County Public Health, and I'd like to go to Patrick to introduce our guest tonight.
Sorry, too many screens open here. Thank you, Mayor. A pleasure to introduce Dr. Mark Johnson. He's the executive director of the Jeffco Public Health. And as you can imagine, he's been very busy lately, and a job I would not want to have right now. And I think personally, I think he's doing a great job, and he's agreed to take some time out tonight of his busy schedule to come and provide an update to city council on, on the COVID nineteen response from the Jefferson County perspective and, and what kind of plans are out there for re-engaging after the stay-at-home order expires on, potentially expires on May eighth. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Johnson.
Thank you very much, Patrick, and thank you, Mayor, and council members. Can you hear me all right? A little bit louder. My computer's over here, and my camera's over here, so I'll stand close.
But I think we can hear you. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to, to bring you up to date as to what's going on in the county. First of all, just some of the numbers. We have had eighty five deaths in Jefferson County, and that is out of a total of one thousand five hundred and eighteen total cases, which is a case fatality rate of about five point six percent. However, we truly believe that the number of cases is probably five times as many as the ones that are reported, because so many of the cases are asymptomatic or have very low symptoms and have not been tested. If we look at a number that high, it puts us closer to a case fatality rate of about one percent, which is where I think we're going to probably end up being. Just for comparison, our influenza case fatality rate is zero point one percent. So even if we add all the other numbers in, it looks to me like we're going to end up with this disease being probably about ten times as deadly as our usual influenza virus. And we look at the state itself, we've had eight hundred and fifty one deaths and sixteen thousand nine hundred and seven cases. I don't have the number of deaths from Wheat Ridge, but we have had a hundred and ten cases from Wheat Ridge. What we're doing now is focusing on the indicators that were put in place, both by our Board of Health, our State Board, State Health Department, our governor, and the White House Task Force listed four or five, but basically four indicators that we felt needed to be in place before we began to reopen the community. Those four were the ability to test every symptomatic patient for COVID nineteen. The second one was to be able to follow up on that case with case management of the case, as well as contact tracing or ring containment of the case, the contacts around that case, which takes quite a bit of epidemiological work, trying to find those contacts and trace those contacts. The third one was the one that everybody remembers, and that is flattening the curve, basically trying to make sure that we didn't spike so quickly and so high in our case count that we overwhelmed our hospital's ability and our healthcare system's ability to deal with those cases. And then the fourth one was, we would like to have seen one incubation period or fourteen days of decreasing cases of COVID nineteen. When the governor made his announcement that he was going to take off the stay-at-home plan for the state at large, he said a couple things that many people didn't hear. He said that there were some counties that had been able to meet those indicators, particularly he highlighted Eagle County, where in Eagle County, the hospital in Vail had bought enough tests that they were able to test everybody in the county that needed to be tested. They were able to set up a system, and they were able to see that decrease in cases. But the rest of the state, which the governor mentioned but did not highlight, he said, other counties are going to have to look at their data, look at their indicators, and determine whether or not they can move to the safer-at-home plan, or whether they will need to stay on the stricter stay-at-home plan. In the Denver metro region, the health departments, we looked at the data that we have in the Denver metro region, and all of the health departments determined that we had not yet met at least three of those indicators. We did not yet have the testing ability. We didn't have the case management and contact tracing teams built yet. And we didn't have fourteen days of decrease in cases. Only Douglas County, who sort of pulled out of the tri-county plan, determined that they were going to go ahead on to the safer-at-home instead of staying on stay-at-home plan. But all of the rest of the counties in the Denver metro region have stayed on that stay-at-home plan. We stayed on for another fourteen days, which is again, one incubation period of this, hoping that we might begin to see a drop in the case number. And also, based on some of the information the governor had given us, we hope that we would begin to see an increased ability to test. As well as give us time to build our case management and contact tracing communities and teams. Over that 14 days, we have seen the ability to do testing go up. We're still not to a level that we would like to be. We also have been able to train more in case management and contact tracing. But we have not seen a consistent drop in cases. However, based on a number of other societal and economic things that are going on in the community. We have determined, at least most of us have determined that after May 8th, we will be moving on to the safer at home plan in the Denver metro region. We would still love to see those cases coming down, but based on the economic devastation that we have seen and what is going on in the economy, we felt that since we do now have a better ability to test, a better ability to trace. And we have not overwhelmed our healthcare systems, that we are able to move and watch closely to see what happens as we move to that safer at home plan. That's another thing that many people didn't really listen to carefully, and that is as we move to safer at home, we are going to be watching very carefully to see what happens, to see if we see a spike in cases, to see if we see any sort of change that will make us move back to a more restrictive sort of a plan. We hope and pray that won't happen because we know that with the, with the stress and the economic situation going on. People are going to be very, very reticent to move back. So we are keeping our fingers crossed. We believe the data is pointing that we're at least not seeing a spike in cases and that we'll be able to do that on May 9. The second issue that has been rather controversial, and you all know how controversial that has been. Has to do with what are we going to do about face coverings? All of the, again, the Denver metro region health departments, we have been discussing that for a long time. We have been looking at the data. We have been looking at what is going on in our communities. And many of us have sort of chosen to go in different directions. We've tried to be as uniform as we could. But on this one, it looks like we're going to be moving in different directions. As you may know, Denver already has put in place a mask ordinance that they are requiring that you wear masks if you are in public spaces. Or if you are in an area where it is impossible or very difficult to maintain that physical distance of six feet from those around you. Boulder County is also moving in that direction. But it looks like, and Tri County is still arguing among their counties a bit. But it looks like Tri County, Jefferson County and Bloomfield are probably going to strongly suggest that people use face coverings when they're in public, but we probably are not going to move into an order, a public health order requiring that. And there's a couple of reasons for that. There's at least three reasons for that that I can think of right off. One is that as you look at the data, and I'm sure you looked at the data very closely, as you look at the data that has been collected over the years, actually since 2003, looking at influenza and now looking at COVID-19. If you look at the data on what does wearing a face mask do, most of the, most of the studies have been done on what we call surgical or medical masks, not on face, just cloth masks. And even looking at the surgical masks, it, it appears that without an N95, the one that is fitted tightly on the face. That there, it's equivocal how much good it does, and there may actually be some harm done by, by wearing or requiring everyone to wear masks. Like I said, it's not clear. You can fall on either side and still have a lot of support for whichever direction you move on that. There is much less that has been looked at as far as, as cloth coverings. But it is not as strong as it is for the medical masks or for the N95 masks. Second reason that we're looking at this, so, so I cannot, I cannot say that the scientific data strongly says that we must move in that direction. Second reason that we're probably moving away from that is that our law enforcement agent, at least for the, the unincorporated Jefferson County, the sheriff has said that he will not be dedicating any of his enforcement team to, to doing enforcement on this if we move toward that. I'm sure you know that we in public health do not have the, the deputies or the enforcement ability to do that. And we will basically rely on businesses to enforce a public health order that we're putting in place, whether or not they agree with it. So based on the fact that we do not believe that we have the ability to enforce this order. And we don't have strong data saying that this is an order that is absolutely unnecessary for the public health. Those two reasons are, are two of the three that have sort of led us to say that we are not going to be putting an order in place. The third one is we have done some preliminary studies around the, the Jefferson County communities, looking at what is the current compliance with wearing masks even without an order? And going into pharmacies and into grocery stores and just doing some, some visual research, looking at who's wearing them and who's not. It has appeared that as far as the workers go, it's almost 100%. It's about 99% of the workers are wearing masks. Not all of them are wearing them correctly. Quite often they wear them below the nose or below the mouth. But they are at least wearing them. And as far as the clients, the people who are customers, depending on where you are in the county, it's somewhere between 70% to 90% with an average of about 85%. So looking at that and wondering how much more we would be able to push that compliance with an order with no enforcement. We don't feel like we would really be able to do a whole lot by doing that. So unless I get struck by lightning in the next 24 hours, we are planning on putting a safer at home plan out there saying that beginning on May 9th, we are going to be moving to a safer at home plan. We are going to be strongly encouraging the use of, of, of face coverings in public, particularly in those areas where it's impossible to have that social distancing. We are going to leave it up to municipalities and to businesses to, to do what they wish as far as policies or ordinances. And we are going to put some in place for the county buildings and county entities where we rent, like with the DMV and other places, which are not really county buildings, but where we have offices. That we are going to push for the, the wearing of masks when people are coming into those buildings. That sort of summarizes where we are right now as far as the numbers involved and some of the, the hot topics and policies. I'd be happy to answer questions or address any other issues that, that may be hot on your agenda if, if you would like at this time.
Thank you very much, Dr. Johnson. We appreciate you being with us tonight. I'll open this up to council. If you have questions, please raise your hand. I see Mr. Stites.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Johnson. Um, just a quick question. Um, as we move into the, the safer at home. And I know that's outlined in the government, governor's comments, but what does that look like for businesses and like restaurants opening and even into retail and, and gyms and things like that? Who starts first? And then what does that timeline look like as businesses kind of roll out?
That's an excellent question. Thank you. If you can remember back, and it's hard now because there have been so many changes. If you remember back to when the governor first started talking about his safer at home plan, he had three phases that he talked about. First phase was moving into what he called the safer at home plan. And there were certain restrictions. I could only have 10 people in together in restaurants, bars were closed, theaters, casinos, a number of other venues that were closed. Uh, the second phase was opening up a bit more where you could have gatherings of up to, I think, 25 to 50. More businesses were opened up. And then eventually the third phase was where it began to open up some of those businesses where there is a, a great deal of congregating. Restaurants, bars, casinos, those kinds of things were in his third phase, not in the first or second phase. And we will be adopting the governor's safer at home plan, which will move us into that first phase so that restaurants, bars, um, casinos, theaters, all of those kinds of things, when you have large groups meeting together will continue to be closed. That includes gyms. Um, a personal trainer can however, do personal training with up to three clients so that we can do some of that, not in a rec center or a gym, but they can do that. Gatherings of up to 10 people. There's, there's a whole list of stores now that will be able to do more business. They won't need to do it curbside. They can let people come into the, into the retail establishment as long as they keep that social distancing and have less than 10. Well, that's, depends on how big the building is. Um, there are some, you know, you can move up to 50% of what your total capacity is. So if you have a big box store, you don't have to limit it to 10. But if you have a small boutique store, you may need to limit it to less than 10 because of the social distancing requirements, those kinds of things. So uh, to some degree, it's still kind of a hodgepodge of what's open and what is not. But I don't have all of those memorized. I could look it up and read some of those to you, but those, those entities where basically people get together to congregate, like bars and restaurants and those kinds of things will still be closed under the first phase of the safer at home plan.
Thank you. Additional questions from council? Uh, Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Johnson for being here. Um, I wanted to quickly talk about baseball. I've had two separate baseball coaches reach out to me for advice about how to play the game of baseball. And I'm not the guy to ask about how to play baseball. Uh, and so it concerns me greatly as we talk about youth sports going into the summer months, how we're going to be able to allow uh, our youth to be able to even play baseball. And, and do you have any suggestions or ideas about how that's going to roll out for youth sports? Specifically, uh, sports like baseball or other, you know, field sports that where there, there isn't that much contact while uh, trying to figure out how to move forward with that.
That, that is a, a, a thank you, councilman. That is something that we are looking closely at. We have been working with the R1 school district. And together we have decided that as far as school sports and the use of school fields for training, that that will be forbidden at this time, at least it will be restricted at this time, that there will not be the school teams getting together and training and that they will not be allowed on the, on the R1 school district fields for training. I know that professional sports is also looking at how do we do this and how do we keep, keep the, the teams together without people in the stadiums and but we are still working on how is that going to be able for the clubs and other kinds of things at the local level? Because it's very difficult to maintain a six foot distance when, when you are training. Now you could put them out on, on the field and yell a lot. But almost always they come in for some training and things like that. So we're still looking at that. We'll be working with, with some of the coaches in the area to see what we can do. But at this time, it looks like it will not be a part of the first, the first wave of opening, the first phase of opening. That we will still be requiring, um, that those sports trainings will not occur under that first phase of safer at home.
Okay. Then on the same topic of religion, uh, what about, uh, the holding of church services and other gatherings like that? What, what's, is there outdoor services available or what, what can be permitted as far as, uh, the holding of a, a church service?
Again, in the governor's order, it, it says that up to 10 people can meet together in a church facility to do the planning for like YouTube or live stream or Zoom or whatever services, if you want to do them electronically. Also, we have allowed if people want to meet in a large lot, as long as they stay in their cars. And sometimes you can use like an, uh, an unused FM radio station where somebody can be giving a sermon or a, a service to all of the cars, as long as they are socially distanced and are staying in that, that is allowed. But as far as getting together, it's still limited to that 10 people gathering in one spot.
So you, you had mentioned about, uh, in other places, depending on the, the established capacity of the building that up to 50% would be permitted. Is that simply for workspaces or retail outlets or what's the uh, distinction there between the 50% capacity rule?
Thank you. I was not clear on that. The 50% capacity is basically for offices like, like our office here or, uh, you know, offices where you may have an attorney's office or others. That moving up to a 50% capacity in the first phase is allowed as long as you can keep that social distancing. And, um, there would be, for, for critical workers, the governor does also mention that you need to be wearing face coverings when you are in common spaces in those areas. Where it, where it's less clear, but, um, is like if you have a huge box store like a Target or a Costco or Walmart or something like that. You are required to keep that social distancing as much as possible. But you're not required to just have 10 people in that area. Cause most people don't go to Costco to gather. They go to shop and then get out of there. So there, you probably have seen, most of the businesses are putting markings on the floor to keep you six feet away from each other as you go through a checkout line. Many of them are putting one-way markers for different aisles so that, so that you are not passing each other face to face as you move down things. So a lot of the businesses are working to try to make sure that they keep that social distancing. But the, the total numbers of those have not been clearly defined. And although some stores are closing the doors when they have a certain number, they've sort of defined what they think is the, the number that's good for them. And I know when I went to one of the King Supers here, I had to wait in line outside before I could go in when somebody else came out. So um, the numbers for those is, is basically the, the guideline for that is social distancing.
Okay. And just one, one last thing, going back to the, uh, description you gave of a large lot with uh, cars in the parking lot, does that same concept apply to like a, a drive-in movie? Or is that, uh, that fall under some sort of separate category?
That has not been brought up to my knowledge. I, I remember drive-in movies. I'm not sure how many of those are still around. But if you could keep the cars separated from each other and the people in them, not going back and forth to buy popcorn and soda and those kinds of things. I would see that as being analogous to a church, church service where you all stay socially distanced in your, in your vehicle. And, um, I, I would see no problem with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Additional questions from council for Dr. Johnson, Ms. Saltine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Dr. Johnson. Um, my question, in the information that was provided, there was a note that Jeffco Public Health would continue to conduct a public messaging campaign uh, to educate the public on what the next normal will, will look like. Can you, uh, share a little bit more about what that public messaging campaign, uh, looks like? And if there's anything we can be doing at the municipal level on that?
Thank you, council member. That, uh, that is actually, we're, we're rolling out tomorrow our first press release on that. We will be, as I said, we're moving towards the, the governor's safer at home. So we're basically using all of the information that the state has already put out, but we will be putting out more with our PIO as well as the County Public Affairs Office. What does it mean to move into a social, um, to a safer at home instead of stay at home? What are those businesses that, uh, will be open now? What are those kinds of regulations or restrictions that are still in place? We have as much as we possibly can through social media, through the newspaper media, through, um, uh, on our webpage and those kinds of things to get that information out there. We also are going to be strongly, um, encouraging face coverings in public, and we're going to be putting out information on what is face covering etiquette? What does it mean to have a face cover on so that you're not touching it all the time, which totally, um, uh, makes the whole process invalid? And how do you, you know, we'll be using the, the governor and CDC's guidelines and how do you make a cloth covering? So all of that information will be coming out through this week, building up to that opening on May, uh, May 9th. Anything that you and Wheat Ridge and your, uh, public information or public affairs office can do to help us with that? We would be more than happy to work with you on that.
Thank you. Uh, additional questions for Dr. Johnson? Uh, Ms. Nosler Beck? And then Ms. Dozeman?
Hi, um, thanks, Dr. Johnson, for being here today. And sorry, I've, I've had some connection issues. So, um, you may have already gone over this. Um, but I've had a couple of questions. Um, and one specifically from a neighbor about, um, masks on trails and in parks. And, um, I was just wondering what your recommendation is. Um, there's a lot of, I think, misunderstanding about whether or not, if no one's around, if you need to wear them. Um, if you just.
Yes. Uh, thank you, council member. That, that is a really confusing issue in, in my neighborhood as well. And, uh, as, as you may have, you may have missed that we are not going to make a public health order for the use of face masks in Jefferson County. But we're going to be strongly encouraging them and giving out some information, how do you do that? And how do you do that well? My, my personal position is that when you are out on a trail and you are clearly away from somebody with six foot or 600 feet distance from other people. six foot or six hundred feet distance from other people, there really is no particular reason to be wearing a mask. And also, if you're riding bikes and you're keeping a social distance, although it's interesting, there's some studies that have been done on biking, that if you are in the slipstream of somebody right in front of you with a bike, their breathing actually goes back about twenty-five feet, not just six feet. So so if you're if you're riding behind somebody, you should be doing even more um separation from them. But as far as getting out in the public and hiking and those kinds of things, and when I walk around my neighborhood, I do not wear a face covering. But I make sure that I'm staying at least six feet away from anybody across the street if somebody's coming and do all of that. That, I think, is perfectly fine. The 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 real purpose for all of this is to cut down the spread of of aerosols and spray, you know, your spit and other things from people around you. And um it's not to try to make everybody wear something that doesn't make any sense. We're trying to make sense, trying to be as scientific as we can. And if you can keep that social distancing and if you're outdoors, your your spray will not hit somebody and your aerosol will be dispersed so that most likely, somebody who's six feet away from you will not, even if they do get some of the aerosol, will not be getting a high enough dose that they could get infected from it. So so my own personal belief and my own personal um the way I do it is I don't wear a mask when I or a a face covering when I'm out uh exercising, walking around. But if I'm in an area where I'm in a common area where people are moving about, or if I'm in an area where I cannot keep that physical distance from somebody, like walking from here to the restroom in my office, I always do put on a face mask.
Thank you. That's really helpful clarification. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh thank you, Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh so my question is regarding schools and children. Um I was wondering if you possibly have any numbers about uh percentage of the younger population that has contracted COVID nineteen. Um and I know that there've kind of, there's been some speculation rolled out as to what school will look like in the fall. Um but I know daycares are still operating in some form or another, at least for uh first responders. And I haven't heard of any outbreaks, and I know that we're trying to prevent the uh at-risk population from contracting it from children if they're carriers and asymptomatic. But my concern is that the the cure might be worse than the cause when we when we come out on the other end of this. And um I know a lot of parents have really been concerned about what fall in school is going to look like.
It it's an excellent question, and I don't have all of the answers for you. I can tell you, though, that as far as the percentages that we have had, at least in Jefferson County, now, everybody says this is a disease of old people. Well, the vast majority of the cases that we have had in Jefferson County have been younger than sixty percent. But the majority of the deaths have been over sixty, not sixty, sixty years of age. And the the number of deaths have been more in the over sixty-five years. So it is much more severe in the older. But it is not, it is not innocuous in the younger population. About eight percent of the cases, uh eight to ten percent in Jefferson County, have been in those younger than twenty. That group that feels like they are invulnerable and aren't going to get this, but many of them do, and we probably have heard we have had some deaths in the state in some twenty-year-olds and and younger. As far as kids getting together, I I you you sort of touched on it, that most of the kids who get it, most young people who get it, unless they have an immune problem or some other sort of a a uh morbidity or chronic disease, most of them are either asymptomatic or have a very mild case of COVID nineteen. That's one of the few blessings of this disease, is that it is not killing the children. However, as you mentioned, when children get together, it's very, very difficult to keep social distancing, and the ones who would really be put at risk are the bus drivers, the the maintenance workers in the school, the teachers in the schools, all of those who will have a swarm of kids who um are probably asymptomatic even when they have it and can pass the disease on without ever knowing they have it. So we're trying to work with the school district and with pri- private schools to figure out what is the best way to deal with this. Um I know and my granddaughter knows that we don't like to go to school online. They want to, it's it's amazing to see kids who want to get back to school. But uh that seems to be the way of it. And we're trying to figure out how do we do that safely, not just for the kids, but also for the teachers and others. And we'll we'll continue to work on that through the next few months to figure out the best way to do that. There are some places and some people who just say, let the kids go back uh because they're at little risk, but it's not the kids I'm worried about so much as as the others around them. So the school, as you know, is closed till the end of this year. You do not know what's going to happen in the fall.
So I have a follow-up question in regards to masks with children. I've seen some information circulating about uh it being dangerous for children of a certain age to wear masks. Um can you maybe touch on that? Do you have any um further information?
This the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and almost every article that you read on face covering says that you should not put them on any child under the age of two or two and under. Uh other than that, there are some people who say you shouldn't use them under kids who are ten years old. I still stick with the shouldn't be. You shouldn't use them on kids two and younger. Most kids who are three, four, five, they hate them, but so do most adults. But they can at least be taught how to use them wisely. So it's it's for sure you should not use them on somebody who's two years old or younger.
Thank you, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh on that same topic of masks for children, uh you had mentioned previously about uh being able unable to come down on one side or the other regarding the use of face masks for adults. And so like, for instance, with the the Wheat Ridge uh Rec Center uh Sun Camp, uh there's a recommendation that's that face masks are going to be used for the children that attend that. And so for children that are in a daycare, are masks encouraged or is that something that is uh recommended or where where do we land on that? Or what would you suggest?
Yeah, it's it's kind of a hard message to get out because I firmly believe we should be using face coverings when we are in public and when we are around other people, particularly if there's that risk of being close together. So I would wholeheartedly support a a uh child sort of daycare program like you're talking about using masks, as long as they're older than two years old. The the difference is, I'm saying that I can't find enough evidence for me to say we are going to mandate that. Based on those issues that I mentioned, that's why I'm not putting an order out there, but I'm strongly encouraging people to use them.
Yeah, and then unrelated to that, uh kind of looking at this uh entire issue globally, uh where right now we're talking about lifting uh the stay-at-home order and uh what I think would be appropriate is providing messaging around what 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 met what metrics or what steps need to take place in order for us to go back to where we are right now, or how do we inform the public that right now we're lifting these orders, but under these circumstances or these metrics, we would pull back and and revert to this stay-at-home order. And wh- what are your strategies or how are you approaching that to make sure that we have a fallback plan if where we're going isn't uh in our best interest?
Based on what we have been able to do so far with the the compliance of the majority of the population in the state of Colorado and in the Denver region and in Jefferson County. If we can continue to and and again, under the stay, under the safer at home, we still say stay at home whenever you can. If you are in a vulnerable population, stay at home all the time except to go you know, grocery shopping. And if you can get someone else to do that, that's good, too. If we we're still focusing on working at home, if you can work at home, do do whatever we can to keep up that social distancing that we've had in place under the stay-at-home order, even though we begin to open up more of the businesses, more of the economy, uh because we feel that that also is very necessary for the health and well-being of of our population. But we're still, we're still not going back at you. Uh my my administrative assistance daughter said, great, I can go to the mall now. Or or go to my neighbor's house and play. We're still not doing that. We're not opening up. We're slowly we're we're returning the faucet slowly. We're opening a crack. The things we're going to be looking for is, do we see a spiking rise in in the number of cases? Do we see a spiking rise in the number of tests that are positive? Um the positivity rate of those tests, because now that we have more tests, we're going to be doing more tests, and we expect to have more positives. But is the positivity rate going up? Uh those indicators that show that it is passing more in community spread than it was when we were under the stay-at-home. Those are the kinds of things we're going to be looking at. And like I said earlier, we we don't want to go back because it's going to be very, very difficult to 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 go back, just just from a psychological point of view. So we're we're slowly opening. We're not opening nearly as fast as most people want to open. Although we're opening, you know, if you if you listen to the the national news and you read the national uh experts, some of them think we're opening too quickly. We believe that we can modulate that to a degree that we don't. And and the goal in all of this, or one of the goals in all of this is and I want to stress, one of the goals in all of this is how do we get the population to what is called a herd immunity level? So that if you do have a positive case, it doesn't spread widely through the population, that there's enough people who are immune that it's hard to spread. That's what what herd immunity is. And it appears that with this infection, we would need to have somewhere between fifty-five and seventy percent of the population having been exposed and having made antibodies to this before we will have herd immunity. There's two major ways you can get to herd immunity. One is like Sweden has tried, just let everybody just do whatever you want and and sort of survival of the fittest. If you happen to get it and you live, great. If you happen to get it and you die, we're sorry. We in America have chosen not to go that way. We have chosen the second way to get to herd immunity, which is how do we keep that peak from peaking too much until we get to a point where we have a vaccine or we have slowly had enough people get get infected or get um exposed to the disease that we now have that herd immunity level. It takes a lot longer. Um but uh that's the goal, is to do it in a way that we don't kill as many people. We don't have as many people at meeting incubation and ICUs and those kinds of things. But the goal is still to try to get to that uh so that we we have that immunity. One of the problems, I'm sure you've heard, is we don't know how long the immunity lasts with uh with this infection. Uh we anticipate that it's probably like some of the other um more serious coronaviruses like SARS and MERS, where it appears that there's at least a year, maybe eighteen months of immunity. But uh we do not expect that there will be lifetime immunity, and we don't think it'll just be a week or so. I said a lot. I hope I answered your question.
Thank you. I guess just uh we have another question by Ms. Dozeman. I just want to make sure that before I go there that um the the messaging out there is that we're not, you know, that we're not going back to a stay-at-home order. It sounds like we're moving out of that category and and we're sort of burning the wick on that. And that we're moving into this, you know, safer at home model, and that it's unlikely that we're going to be going back to that uh that uh stay-at-home model.
I I would, I would put a caveat around the word unlikely. If people continue to be compliant, if people tend to voluntarily wear their face masks and stay at home and keep that social distancing, yes, I think we will slowly be able to move into the next phase. If people say, whoa, everything's free and open, we can just go back to living the way we used to, then we're probably going to have to move back. So it it depends on how people respond.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh I wanted to address something that you just spoke to, um and it's also related to a comment that you made earlier. Uh you had said that we were hoping to not see a spike in cases uh that would move us back. However, as we're seeing mass testing, we're inevitably going to see the number of cases increase because there are so many people that are asymptomatic, and you spoke earlier to that. Um and so I mean, can you tell me how we're going to address that issue, especially with messaging? Because I I know that Lutheran Hospital and many other hospitals are going to be resuming um what they're considering elective surgeries, but it's really that they weren't as urgent as life or death, but they are things such as spine and heart, you know, pacemakers, those kind of elective surgeries, but they're testing patients at least seventy-two hours beforehand. And so we're going to be catching those people that are falling through the cracks right now and and are asymptomatic or have such mild symptoms that they may not think that they have it. So can can you maybe speak to how how we're going to address that and um es- especially as far as public policy goes, because I was, I would hate to see us have to move back because of spiking cases, even if the mortality rate is dropping because of it.
Yep, thank you. That's that's an excellent question. It's a problematic question. But basically, what we where we are right now is we're beginning to get enough testing to test those who are symptomatic. That's sort of been the goal, is can we test everybody who's having symptoms? As we move forward, there's going to be a lot more testing. We're going to start testing everybody who comes into the hospital. We're going to start testing more and more people who are just going to work. There's going to be more and more of that kind of testing. And I don't want to get into the the whole technicalities between these, the molecular testing and the serological testing and all of the differences between those, but there also is going to be a lot more serological testing, which basically just tells you do you have antibodies to this infection or not, which tells us if you've been exposed or not, whether you've ever had the symptoms or not. So so that's going to help give us a a background as to the the surveillance of what really has happened in the population. Are we right that, you know, eighty percent of the cases have not been symptomatic? And it's going to help us fine-tune that. As we test more, we think we will find more positive cases, but we think we'll find more of those asymptomatic cases, which which will not which which will not make us as concerned as finding more and more people who are symptomatic. We also, as we test more, are going to find more and more who are not positive. And so that's where I mentioned the positivity rate of the testing. But as we start testing more and more people who are not symptomatic, we will find more cases, but we're going to see that the positivity rate actually goes down or stays low because we're testing a lot more who are negative. And so those are the two kinds of things we're going to be looking for is the number of cases and the positivity rate in our testing, so that it will tell us whoa, things are going crazy, we're getting more and more positivity and more and more cases, something bad has happened, or we're seeing more cases, but the positivity rate is going down. So we're not as concerned because it doesn't seem like the the infection is as wide or or causing as much trouble in the population as as that's what we hope.
Thank you, uh Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um Dr. Johnson, and this may be something that you can't even answer. Um you talked about testing and antibodies and uh building that herd immunity. How long do the models or how long do we think that's going to take, provided people kind of stay on a trajectory where we're at now, where people are kind of following the rules and and moving forward?
When you say, how long will that take? How long?
I guess how how long, I and I and I think we're starting to see more unrest in in the population in general, but uh is there a timeline? And is there something that we were looking at these certain phases to go for a few months? Are we looking this to go for years? Uh what what's the expectation?
The the expectation is that we think that we'll be in a phase for probably between three to five weeks. That will give us two or more incubation periods to kind of see what's going on with the disease. So if we can, if we can move into the safer at home and watch for three to five weeks, depending on how things are going and what's happening, then if everything looks good, we think we can move in.
Dr. Johnson, we seem to have lost uh lost contact with you, if you can hear us. We seem to have lost contact with Dr. Johnson. All right, uh let's see if Dr. Johnson calls back in here in just a moment. We'll um we'll give it just a couple of minutes, get a water break here if uh you need to take a sip.
We'll keep a lookout for him. Thank you.
Okay. While we have a break and the uh waiting for Dr. Johnson, I'd like to go on the record to say that we all of our counselors are with us tonight, except for Councilwoman Weaver, who's had some had some foreign problems today, and we uh we send our best wishes to her and hope um hope her brood is uh is doing okay. Um Miss Shek, is he, do you see anybody coming back in on the back end?
Um not yet, Mayor.
Okay. Okay. Well, I think we had a pretty good discussion with Dr. Johnson. I did want to, want to thank him for joining us.
I'll reach out to him on the side if you want to move on to the.
Would you do that, uh, Mr. Goff? I think, uh, I think he, he answered most of our questions and I think had a really good presentation. Please express our, our appreciation for his work. Uh, I wanted to, to thank him in particular for uh, working with his colleagues at Tri-County Health and other health departments in order to generate a, a common, uh, a common order so that, so that the orders that come out, uh, are more understandable and more consistent for our public. And he's certainly been working in that direction and I appreciate that. So, anyway, we will, uh, we will finish up then with our public health update with, uh, Dr. Tom Johnson. And move on to agenda item number three. This is an update on parks and recreation programming and schedules uh, in our, in our revised world here. And we have, uh, fortunate to have our Parks and Recreation Direct, Director, uh, Ms. Karen O'Donnell. Ms. O'Donnell, thank you for joining us and I will turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Um, thank you for the opportunity to present this information to you. Um, as you can imagine, with frequent changes and a lot of uncertainty that you just heard a lot about, um, this is, wh- what I've shared with you is really a work in progress. It's where we stand today and I just want to re- reiterate that our intention is to be nimble and make changes as we need to. If, um, guidelines are loosened at any point, we, as a, as a team, will be ready to react and provide whatever services, um, we can to the community or to best serve our community. Um, so right now it's with information that's given to us through the governor, through the Department of Health, through the CDC, um, through eight million webinars that you all are probably attending as well. Um, just obtaining all the information we can and doing the best we can to make good decisions. So, um, I will go through, uh, some of the information in the memo and answer any questions that you might have. And I also appreciate that in, um, Dr. Johnson's presentation, you all had some questions that were definitely related to parks and recreation. Um, and it was, it was nice to hear those and we can talk more about any of those as you like, but I also thought it was interesting as he discussed that really gyms reopening, when you look at the phase one, two, and three are probably closer to that phase three. Um, a- at least in the capacity that we're used to, but there might be some middle ground, um, for some opportunities. So looking at the recreation center, the, as you're probably aware, the governor has said that gyms are not able to be open at this time. And also when you look at groups not exceeding ten people, we certainly can't operate in any capacity in, in which we're used to. So, um, we decided to really look closely at community need and what we believe is that with individuals going back to work, that childcare is really going to be a priority and that's something that we're able to do. And so we will have preschool and we will have summer camp and summer camp had, well, both have very strict guidelines in general, but now even, uh, even more strict guidelines. So we need to follow, um, protocol that's been addressed through the CDC and through our licensing organization. And what that involves, we'll be able to have sixty campers and I believe we have fifty-five signed up right now. Um, it will be ten, ten per group. Um, it has to be the same kids in a group all summer, has to be um, really the same staff working with those kids all summer long. So we're really containing those groups. There's a lot of regulations regarding sanitization. So like if a group goes into the gymnasium, we need to clean that gym before the next group goes in. But the cool thing is, is you may have heard of these electrostatic foggers. We have purchased some of those and we'll be able to quickly and easily, um, provide that sanitization for our different spaces. Um, and that will also, we will also have that for City Hall and other city buildings as well. Um, let's see. So we also are going to have some of our full-time employees assisting with summer camp and providing those responsibilities so that they're better aligning with our current operations, because there are certain people, um, that are employed with us that their jobs can't are, aren't happening as usual. So we are utilizing their skills to, um, meet the needs of our organization right now. Um, let's see. Our current plan limits activities through the end of summer camp, which summer camp starts June first and ends August fourteenth. So in thinking about, um, the likelihood of reopening versus not reopening anytime soon, um, we could limit our operations in the recreation center to summer camp and preschool through that time period. So through the end of camp, which is August fourteenth. However, again, as I mentioned earlier, if the guidelines change significantly, we'll be able to potentially open the fitness floor or open the indoor pool or provide some fitness classes in the gymnasium and like half the gym. But we'd likely do that with a, a reservation system. So that's what some of the other communities are talking about across the country that maybe are opening um, under different guidelines than we are, is really looking at, okay, maybe there's ten people that can use cardio equipment at one point and they'll sign up for a one-hour time block. So those are the kinds of things we're thinking of, um, for operations moving forward, if and when we get to that point. The Active Adult Center, um, the, the governor has mentioned that the, our senior citizens are considered a vulnerable population with, um, COVID nineteen. And so with that, we believe that it's the safe thing to do to keep the Active Adult Center closed until we have, um, different guidelines presented to us. However, we know that that population in particular really, um, thrives on socialization. So we're looking at how can we be creative and provide some virtual programming? And I also knowing that a lot of folks don't use the internet and, um, what other options do we have? So people, um, creating programs over the phone where people can connect, um, or, or other opportunities, um, you while considering social distancing. So our staff is working really hard to come up with, um, different opportunities for the Active Adult Center patrons as well. As for, uh, classes and programs, we have launched a virtual recreation center. I hope that you all saw that and maybe took, took a look. It opened up on Friday. And, um, definitely more content to come. Uh, we're adding to it every day, but there's about fifty-plus options for people to go on. Most of them are free. We also have, um, a, a donation-based opportunity if, um, people want to, um, to contribute to that. So we wanted to make it accessible for anyone regardless of the financial situation that they may be in, but also hoping that, um, some people do have the ability and willingness to, to pay for certain classes. Uh, we have the opportunity, given the rule of no groups larger than ten, to have some outdoor classes and we're looking at starting those on June first with the registration opening May eleventh. So that would limit to nine participants and one instructor at this point. And again, if guidelines change, perhaps those groups could get larger. Uh, with future programming and classes, we're really looking at the neat, the lead time to plan and facilitate those programs and they're really individual decisions. And in a lot of cases, I think a good number that we're looking at is like a six-week lead time to make something happen. So we'll make decisions as we can on, um, those individual programs and classes that have not been canceled yet. The summer program guide, because of the uncertainty and the rapidly changing information, we decided that we were not going to be putting out a summer program guide this year, um, because we just didn't have a lot of accurate information. So what we're doing is providing that information on the website, um, connecting with people through social media and we have an e-newsletter. So um, please send people our way if, um, they're looking for that information. We can add anybody to the list. We'd love to have more subscribers and we, um, are providing that information regularly to folks. We do intend to publish the fall guide. Interestingly, the content is due in June for that, so we'll see where we're at at that point, but our plan is to still put together, um, that program guide for, uh, September. So with regard to rentals, and that's indoor, outdoor, and to your point, Councilman Urban, the field rentals, at this point, we've determined that we're canceling those through June. And again, we'll look ahead at future dates, looking six weeks in advance to make future decisions. Um, similarly with events, and for us, the only event that that really impacts right now is the June performance in the park and the, um, people that we've lined up as entertainment, they're happy to either push that date back to the fall or, um, look at performing next year. So, um, so they're all open to that. We've also toyed with the idea that I believe came up earlier with like a drive-in kind of situation. Um, I don't think we're prepared to do that for June, but perhaps if July and August, if we continue to have these impacts, that's something we would look at because we, we certainly don't want to cancel all of our events through the year, if there's any way we can work around that. Uh, the outdoor pool is an interesting one. You may have heard that, uh, at least one other community in the Denver metro area has closed for the summer. I, uh, in talking with Patrick, we determined that we'd really like to hope for a partial season. So we know that we can't open Memorial Day and for all of the reasons, I'm not going to read everything in that memo, but for, for the most part, the the biggest component is lifeguard recruitment and training and lifeguard safety. Um, but also de-winterizing inspections, um, the inability to social distance right now in a, in a pool setting. For all those reasons, we can't, we know we won't be able to open Memorial Day, but we're shooting for July first as an opening day, just, um, because well, it gives us time to prepare and make future decisions, but we'll make a decision by Memorial Day if that's not possible. But that's what we're aiming for and what we're certainly hoping for. Um, park amenities, as I'm sure you're all aware, the playground, skate park, basketball courts, park restrooms have been closed along with, um, tennis courts. And those will all continue to be closed until further notice, until we get a different direction. The one thing that I think, um, could potentially reopen after the uh, stay-at-home order is lifted is tennis, if we open it for one-on-one play. So we'd have to, you know, just change the signage there, but allow that, um, for folks. And, um, we have, we do have more Santalets available. So while the restrooms are closed, we do have facilities for people to use if they need to use, um, a restroom. The dog park has remained open through this because, um, as we've had staff checking in, we haven't had issues with people, um, breaking those social distancing guidelines. People have been very responsible in what we've witnessed and we have staff regularly cleaning the gates and other hard surfaces there. So, um, we're one of the few communities that have kept that open. Um, but I'm, I'm happy to report that it's been a positive, I think, from what I've heard. Um, our staff have done a fantastic job with putting up signage and cleaning hard surfaces all throughout the parks and trails. And you know, um, because you've all been out there, that the parks and trails are heavily utilized during this time. Um, so really kudos to our Parks Forestry and Open Space staff for being out there and, and doing a fantastic job. The Clear Creek has been closed for recreational use primarily because, um, there's a desire to keep uh, rescues from happening. So if people aren't in the water, they don't need to be rescued. So our, our, um, person, emergency personnel can focus elsewhere. So, um, for us, it is primarily impacted gold panning and you may have heard, um, some grumbling about that, but, um, that's just one thing we have signage up and are, are trying to enforce as well. The community garden is open now with restrictions related to social distancing. So you can see all of those rules on the memo, but specifically we're limiting it to eight people at any given time. Um, and it's large enough that people, eight people can be there and be, um, spread apart more than six feet. Parks operations, we've had, um, in order to maintain social distancing, there, there was a new schedule created where half of the staff work Monday, Wednesday, Friday, half work Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. So they each have their own vehicle. They can remain far more than six feet apart and still, um, continue doing the work that they do. And Zach, our Parks Forestry and Open Space Manager, has also uh, supplemented their work with an online training system, which you can check that out too. It's, it's called Greenius. So it's, it's been a really nice thing for the, our staff to have as well. And talking about the, I, I didn't have it in the memo, but the masks is that came up in the previous conversation. Our Parks Forestry and Open Space staff all have masks, which were made by, um, one of our staff members, Kelsey Carter. And she also has made a bunch for other city staff as well. She's pretty great. But they all have them and in, in, similar to what was brought up before, they don't necessarily have to wear them if they're out in a park by themselves and no one is around them, but they have them on them. So if that situation was to change, they can be safe and protect themselves and others. So that's the expectation there. Our seasonal hiring is on hold at this point and some contractual work was offered as potential budget cuts. So what that means is the expected level of service may be reduced a little bit. Um, but they're really working hard to keep things looking as great as they always do. So I wouldn't expect it to be a massive change, but just so you're aware, if there's a point where you see that, um, a, a park isn't mowed as frequently as it normally is, that's why. Um, but, but we will work to make things look just as fantastic as you have come to expect. Uh, just a, a, a component on employees, most of, well, a lot of our recreation staff are working from home and they will continue to do so when possible. Um, some staff are assisting with work at City Hall. Many will be helping with childcare, as I mentioned earlier. Our benefited employees who cannot work in the capacity that they're used to will be reassigned to, some will be helping Ally's team in administrative services. Some will assist with park maintenance. And again, the childcare component or potentially cleaning facilities, but everybody will be working and, um, everyone's really kind of excited to do what they can really just to serve the greater community. Um, because that's really why most people get into the business that we're in anyway. So it's nice to see everyone, uh, come together. A, a little bit on the variable plan. So that's our part-time employees. We've been able to keep our part-time employees on the books, which has been a really great thing for us because we certainly didn't want to lose people. Um, when you lose people, sometimes when you reopen, they, they might not be there. Um, and they're all essential to the success of our organization. So I'm really happy that we've been able to keep them employed. Um, we initially had those employees working in the facility when it was close to the public, but we were still allowed to be in the building. They were doing cleaning and inventory and a lot of the things that we typically do during our annual shutdown, which will likely not happen, given the situation. Um, so they've gotten a lot of work done, but then when the stay-at-home order was, uh, in place, we had those folks at a hundred percent of their average weekly wages, um, through the seventeenth of April and then reduce that to seventy-five percent of their av- average weekly wages through the end of the stay-at-home order on the eighth. And then hopefully, if it's lifted, as suggested, that those folks will again come back to work as desired, um, on the eleventh of May and we'll be able to provide, um, opportunities for hours at the facility. Um, the last thing on the memo is really just hygiene and how we're going to address that. And these are just sample. I mean, it's not everything. There's certainly more to be added to that list, but there will be signage in all of our facilities. We've, um, discussed the idea of the health checks, taking temperatures and wellness surveys. Um, I know we do have some of the thermometers where you don't have to touch people. And we already have them at City Hall for the court system. So, um, we expect to implement that. We have hygiene stations that we've ordered, so more of those with, um, the hand sanitizer and tissues and they also have the little slot for masks. I don't know if we'll have the ability to provide those in the beginning, but potentially depending. Um, let's see. So we would expect our employees to wear masks and patrons as well. Um, increased sanitization of hard surfaces, um, just increasing the frequency. Sneeze guards will be installed at the front desk, uh, of all of our facilities, really. Um, I'd already talked about the electrostatic foggers. We'd look to limit cash handling. I would love to eliminate it. I'm not sure how we would do that. So at, at this point, limiting that. Um, once fitness equipment can, we can start utilizing the floor, either moving pieces or blocking off pieces so people aren't directly next to one another. Having staff monitoring the social distancing. Um, I think a lot of communities have the, have staff in parks and call them ambassadors. So something like that in our facilities and potentially in our parks. Um, sanitizing writing utensils and then potentially using tape, paint, wha- whatever needs for. Sanitizing riding utensils and then potentially using tape, paint, whatever needs for marking social distancing requirements on throughout the facility or outside as we need to, depending on what, what operation plan we implement. And then the other thing I'd mention is that I'm working with other Jefferson County communities to really kind of look how we can align with one another, because we think that that's, you know, a good approach. If, if one city opens their facility June 1st and another one doesn't do it until September 1st, that might look a little wonky. So we're kind of working together. And so I'm working with Lakewood, Golden, Apex Parks and Rec District, Evergreen Parks and Rec District and Foothills Parks and Rec District. And we're hoping to meet with the Department of Health this week to kind of talk about our reopening plans together. And then also I meet with the Colorado Parks and Recreation Association Directors Group, NRPA. That's our National Recreation and Park Association and online communities, webinars, press conferences, all the information. As I mentioned before, just trying to take it all in. And I know that Susan Anderson, our Recreation Manager and Zach, who I've mentioned before, our Parks Forestry and Open Space Manager, they're also taking in all the information that they can. And we're really working together to create the best plan for the community of Wheat Ridge. And, and as I mentioned earlier, just trying to be nimble so that we can react as things change. And again, do the best we can to serve everybody in the community. So with that, what questions might you have?
Thank you very much, Ms. O'Donnell. It was a very thorough report. We appreciate it. Questions from council, raise your hand if you've got a question. And I will call on you. Ms. Dozeman and then Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you. So you had mentioned that some of the rec center is going to be going online. Are you going to be restarting memberships or is that just going to be free to the public?
So with memberships, the plan is to keep it on hold for now because people won't get the same out of their membership that, that they've had in the past. Right? So right now it's, it's primarily free and then donation based. However, if there's something like personal training, something that's a very individual benefit, there will still be a cost associated with that service. But just general classes, it's just donation based at this point. And I, and I think once we are able to open up, if we're opening up at a, at a limited level, it will likely be a reduced rate. In talking with other directors, that's kind of what people are leaning towards is still keeping the memberships on hold. Because if you came in and you signed up for an hour-long time slot, for example, to use cardio equipment, that's not the same as being able to walk into the rec center, swiping your membership card and being able to do whatever you want for as long as you want. So trying to figure that out, those logistics are the, are the difficult, well, one of the many difficult components. But, but we haven't quite figured it out.
And in regards to cash handling, that's not going to be like mandatory, right? Like you'll take cash if, if it's given, but it's just going to be a matter of you have a preference of.
Yeah. That's why I said I would like to eliminate it, but I don't think that's.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hutchinson and Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question and I don't know if, if you know this or not. Is the ash treat treatment program going to continue?
I don't know, but I will find out.
Okay. They were going to be like injections or, you know, preventative.
I think Zach is listening, so if he hears this and can text me, I will let you know before I get off. But I don't know, otherwise I'll get back to you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Karen, the, on some of the programs that you guys offer, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry, my screen's going funny. So I just checking. On some of the programs that you guys offer that aren't necessarily like physical recreation, but are like more art or like yoga, or there's also like mat Pilates. And are most of those people who, so it's a two-part question. Are most of those people who teach those, are they subcontractors or are they employees of the Parks and Rec?
It's a combination. A lot of your specialized classes are, yeah, contract, contracted individuals.
Can you guys hear, sorry if I just cut you off.
You froze for a second there.
Okay. So then my second question is, if going online a little bit, is there a way that maybe some of those subcontracted, like class leaders, is there a way you could help them, maybe market that they could do an online class? And you can, maybe, maybe they can charge a small fee for those classes. Like if you're following a painting class or Pilates, mat Pilates or something. Is there something you can do to kind of help those subcontractors, which are, you know, basically independent, you know, small businesses? Can you, is there some way you can help them by kind of marketing that a little bit?
Sure. And I guess I'm, I wasn't entirely clear because it's a different. They still work for the city. It's just a different classification.
Okay.
But they're still getting paid through us, if that makes. But yes, I mean, there, there's definitely different options. We've been kind of working through, you know, do we, do we do a virtual membership? Do we do charge for individual classes or this donation-based idea? And I think we lean towards, towards the donation. I was thinking of my own personal experience. For example, I have friends that teach yoga classes and they'll put a yoga class out there and say, you know, it's donation-based and the suggested donation is $10 to $25. And I think of myself, I'm paying the $25 because I want to support that person and I care about that business. Whereas there's other people that probably can't pay. So I think it just kind of opens the opportunity for people that want to give back and, and not limiting to those who, who can't afford it right now. So that was the approach we took. Right or wrong?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Additional questions for Ms. O'Donnell. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You'd mentioned a six-week lead time for any programmatic changes. And I'm looking specifically at the baseball field situation. If the governor comes out or Dr. Johnson comes out and provides some guidance on that, would it take six weeks to, to enact that? Or what's the, the thought behind having a six-week lead time on any changes?
I think that's just a general guideline, but it's not, it doesn't, it's not for everything. I think right now we have things closed through June, so we could July 1st be prepared. Six weeks was just in general, because I, I mean, you could look case by case at any given program and see, you know, how, how much equipment do we need, what, what kind of planning is needed? And, you know, what do we need to get people registered, for example? So each program you look at differently with that or service. In, in that instance, it likely wouldn't take six weeks.
Okay.
So I think, I think it could be a relatively easy, quick turnaround.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Additional questions from Ms. O'Donnell.
I was just going to add to that, Mr. Mayor, maybe. As Karen mentioned this earlier a little bit, but we're, safety and the health of our employees and residents, of course, is the number one priority in making these decisions. But Karen and I have been talking about this a lot and, and, you know, we want, if, if we can, we want to be able to provide something to our residents, if it's at the end of the summer or the fall. But again, only if, if safety allows it. And so that's kind of why we're taking this incremental approach as much as possible. And I think the six weeks was what we came up with, with the pool. It would probably takes us, take us six weeks to get that up and lifeguards and, and such. And but, so again, we're, we're trying to do everything we can. People are going to want to do something at some point with some activities. So if there's something we can do and then people could stay safe and healthy, we're going to, we're going to do our best to make sure we can do that.
Yeah. And if I can just add to that, I mean, I think that's kind of what Dr. Johnson was talking about too. Is like the idea that kids may be a little more resilient, but when we're putting our staff at risk, that's a big concern for me too. So just, yeah, making sure everyone's safe, our community and our, and our staff.
Thank you. I, I will mention, I had one, one call. I, I believe that you, you got a copy of it and are working on it as some bicycle speeding down the Clear Creek Trail. And I, we had some concerns, citizen comments on that, and I know you're working on that. And I, I appreciate your work on that.
Yes.
Mr. Urban and Ms. Ms. Dozeman.
I, I guess to that point about bicycle speeding on the Clear Creek, I personally use Strava and I know that in the Strava app, you're encouraged to race against other participants in that app. And it's literally a list of people who have speeded along Clear Creek and I may be one of them. I'll admit that. But I don't know if that's something to look at down the road, whether we work with them to better understand how it can discourage that. Or, you know, work, you know, in concert with that. But it's literally an app that encourages that to some degree. It encourages people to be safe and whatnot. But if the trail is empty, that's one thing, but if it's full of people, that's another. So that may be something to look at or try to figure out how to work in concert with them.
Just to update you on that, Zach Lovato, our Parks Forestry and Open Space Manager, and I had a good conversation today and are working on a plan. And also Sarah Spalding, helping with social media and, and print media. So, and she's got a video she's working with Jesse on. So there's a lot of people helping out with this.
Thank you so much, Ms. Dozeman.
But I think another one of the issues, and we've kind of touched on this before, is a lot more dogs in the parks that are off-leash. And the concerns that some of the residents, particularly around those parks, are having with that. So I don't know if that may be something that Patrick can touch on as far as like enforcement and, and whatnot. But I, I know that that's been kind of a growing concern.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Dozeman. And I think Chief Murtha may still be on. And see if we can pull him over. Yep. He, he's, he's aware of the issue. We've, we've passed on those complaints to the police department. And I think he's, he's joining here in a second. Maybe he could give us an update on that. There he is. Top, you're still muted there.
Thank you, Chief.
There you go. I caught the tail end of that question. I'm sorry. I was doing two things at once there. The dogs off-leash, was it or?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So, yeah, we're working with our CSOs on that. We also actually pulled in the marshals who were, had been previously working in our court. They're actually post-certified law enforcement. And we dedicated them, thanks to Judge Randall, to actually going out and dealing with all of our COVID-related complaints. So they were working in the parks as well as on the street. We had several complaints about dogs at large, people walking, their dogs off-leash and whatnot. So we singly, singularly tasked them. Of course, our CSOs and our officers are doing that part-time, but we singularly tasked them to go out and educate the public and work on that. So we had a multi-pronged approach to try and curb that sort of behavior. And we're working with Sarah as well on, on different sort of public outreach to, to get to that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Sure.
Additional questions, Ms. Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, just want to thank you, Karen, your thorough explanation of all the, just different aspects of the work that Parks and Rec provides our community, just was a reminder of the many, many things you do and how complicated they are and the many ways you serve our community. And I know Parks and Rec was what I was doing in Wheat Ridge before I moved here. So thank you for the thoroughness of that. And I know we're all looking forward to when the time is right for some of that to come back online. So I appreciate the update. I just wanted to add the concern about this bicyclist speeding on the Clear Creek. I think in general, if there's going to be any type of messaging or outreach, the cyclists are always super visible and I have the same concerns when I'm riding, especially with my son. But I think in general, considerate trail use, there's a lot of people out there with dogs on extender leashes that are like going all the way across the trail. And there's people that are being considerate of staying on their side of the trail. So I think in general, if there's going to be something, instead of just targeting the cyclists, you know, targeting overall safe trail behavior, because the, the cyclists are the most dangerous in some ways. But those dogs on extender leashes, like I've actually seen a couple of bad, bad things in the last few months. So I just, if we're doing that, I'd encourage us to look at overall considerate trail use because we have a lot of different users and they all have their ways of, you know, being anything from inconsiderate to dangerous. So thank you guys for jumping on that.
Thank you. Additional questions for Ms. O'Donnell this time. Ms. O'Donnell, thank you very much for, for joining us tonight and thank you for a really comprehensive report. And thank you and your staff for really stepping up during, during this emergency and providing support services as we can and getting our parks and recs ready for when we're able to open. Because I know we have a great, great system and I know people are looking forward to, to using those. So as soon as we can open, we're looking forward to it. So thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Okay, we will, we're on item number four. This is our staff reports. I'll go to Mr. Goff.
I think I will turn that over to our city clerk. Mr. Kirkpatrick asked to bring this up in front of council to get some direction or at least give an update on how we're dealing with minutes and citizen comment that we get in with your speaks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have discovered that it is very easy to get a transcript of any Wheat Ridge Speaks comments and append those to the end of the minutes. So what I am planning to do is take the comments that come in from noon on a Monday through the following noon on a Monday and append those to the minutes of either the council meeting or the study session. For that, so for tonight, we would include as an addendum, any Wheat Ridge Speaks comments we have received in the past seven days. And we'll continue to do that. Second, it is easy for people to search the database of those comments to find a keyword or a phrase. So if you want to see all the comments that have been made about a zoning change at 3 Twilight Drive where I live, then you could search that and see them. The identity of the individual who made the comments, as you well know, is only available to leadership. The public cannot see who, where they live, said something otherwise. That creates a question that we need to address in terms of, does it matter to council to know or for the public to know whether a comment comes from a resident or somebody who lives in Maryland or, or Nevada? It doesn't matter to the clerk's office how we handle that. But if you have any preference in terms of identifying where the commenter came from, for whatever reason, please let me know that. What we still haven't really addressed is two things. The first one, of course, is the issue surrounding reading the Wheat Ridge Speaks comments into the record at the beginning of the meeting during citizens' right to speak. That is not up to the clerk's office. That is a council operating rule that you would need to discuss if you want to do that. I did consult with Mr. Dahl and it is the city attorney's opinion that we do not need for any legal reason to read those comments into the minutes. There is no requirement that we do that. And so that would be again, a policy question for the council to address if it chooses to. Finally, there is one legal question that we need to look at, not necessarily tonight, but at some point we have to ask, answer the question, wouldn't we hold a public hearing? And there are Wheat Ridge Speaks comments addressed to an issue that is the subject of a public hearing. Do those comments need to be inserted verbatim into the record of the public hearing? Even though that commenter is not present at the hearing? Because there's some legal technicality around a complete record of the public hearing. It is not clear that we have to do that or that we can't do that. But that is a policy question that council, I think, needs to address at some point. I'm happy to answer any questions you have and thank you for the opportunity to get some guidance. Thank you very much. I have Mr. Stites and then Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Kirkpatrick, for looking into that. To, and I know we haven't quite gotten, I don't think, to the section of the minutes yet that we've approved where we actually had Wheat Ridge Speaks comments. Is that true?
That's true. We have, we added them in for the week that ended last Monday. And we look back and Wheat Ridge Speaks has only been up and running for two previous regular council meetings. So we can retroactively do that. So we can retroactively do that and we will, we will go about the process of doing that, that's just, you know, a clerical task. And we will do that to make sure that from the beginning of Wheat Ridge Speaks, the comments are entered in the minutes, even if that's retroactive.
Okay, thank you, just for for my opinion and and I feel like I'm fairly strong on this, I guess. I do not believe that those comments should be read into the record, I I don't feel that Wheat Ridge Speaks was designed to. Necessarily make our meetings go longer and and I think last week we had sixteen comments on there. So if we have somebody reading those into the record at the beginning of a meeting at three minutes apiece possibly, that's that's quite a bit of time. And that can make meetings very cumbersome, not only to us, but to the public who wants to come and view those meetings. We're talking about meetings that'll last three or four hours, so I I think the point of Wheat Ridge Speaks was to bring in more feedback from the from the public. And they can view that, we can view that, and I, whether they want to view that or not, that that's up to them, but I think for us, it's very important that we do view it. So one thing that I'd like to see us go forward with is that if either on the website, it can show that. Who's logged in and seen it as as an elected official, or that maybe we add it to when we take attendance at the beginning of a meeting. You know, when you take roll call, we say here, we should also say and seen, or or maybe the second question is, have you seen the. The comments on Wheat Ridge Speaks and we can answer to that yes or no at that point. And then as far as public hearings goes, I like the idea of inserting those comments maybe in the public record in them in those minutes. You can just copy and paste it verbatim right in that section, so it is a complete part of that meeting record. And and just both if, I I think the one other reason why I don't believe they should be read in in into the record. Is because the way you read something matters and and somebody's voice is different and that's why conceptually we have. Text and email issues all the time when we're we're speaking to each other and social media, right? We we have a lot of fights that that develop through that and and if if say Steve, the the city clerk is reading somebody's comments. Whether or not he's doing his best and he's stumbling over their words, some people don't spell all that great, some people use that grammar when they write. Looking at the comments last week, I believe Maki Delay had a really beautiful comment about the masks and and some great questions. But I don't know if it would take more than three minutes to read that, so if it takes more than that, why would that comment be more than three minutes? But somebody else gets three, and what if whoever's reading that, they don't agree with it and they roll their eyes in the middle of that presentation? They're reading that comment and they say, and, ah, you know, maybe they're tired, maybe it's not, but that comes across. And that's just one more way that we we open ourselves up to some issues, so anyway, I'll I'll give the floor, thank you.
If I may, I think it's also a short distance from reading the comments into the record. To having people insist that we read a two-hundred-page document or a twenty-minute manifesto into the record. Send that to you and one of you wants to enter it in the record, that's clearly within council's rules. There is a limit on the number of words they can put in a Wheat Ridge Speaks comment. But I think reading them into the record, I agree with everything councillor Stites had to say about that, it just, on no level does it make any sense. Either in terms of the minutes or in terms of faithfully reproducing the attitude, the mindset of the person reading the comments.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure you and council knows that Jerry Dahl is on on the line, just on phone. So if if anybody has questions for him, he's on, he's on the call. Thank you. I was gonna, just one more, sorry, in agreement with what Steve just said, if somebody sends me a letter. That they would like me to read, I get the tone, the emotional tone of what they're about, of what they want. So if I were to read that letter into the record, it would be a lot better than somebody just trying to read something cold, so I think that makes more sense.
Thank you, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think as it relates to a public hearing. And specifically as it relates to a public hearing and comments and and Wheat Ridge Speaks, that the affirmation by council members. That we've read each individual comment relative to that particular public hearing. And then the city clerk inserts that transcript of the Wheat Ridge Speaks comments into the public hearing record. I think that would facilitate what we're looking for there, again, I wouldn't want the the transcript read into the record. On whether it be public hearings or the regular meetings as it stands. One issue that I've seen is that as you go into Wheat Ridge Speaks, you can, at least I'm. How I perceive it is that you can read the comments without logging in, and so in some cases I've read the comments without logging in. And unless I log in, then it shows, you know, X number of council members have read this. And so if we're required to provide some kind of affirmation at the beginning of the public hearing saying I've read this. That is a more affirmative record than the notation on Wheat Ridge Speaks saying X number of council members have read this. To the question presented about the the identification of the commenter in Wheat Ridge Speaks, I think that's critical. Regardless of whether they're from Wheat Ridge or not, I don't care what their address is, but if we're going to require that information of people who speak under public comment. I think we need to be equally. Provide that equal requirement to everybody that provides comments and if someone's going to provide a comment, I want to know who it is. Regardless of what their position is, just because if you've got something to say, then I want to know what your name is and where you live. So and I think that's, that that also frames people's comments as well, if someone's anonymous, they're gonna have a whole different. Set of comments than if they have to ascribe their name and address to their comments, so.
In addition to which, Mr. Urban, the problem is, under the First Amendment, if they want to issue a diatribe of obscenities. When Wheat Ridge Speaks, the software eliminates most of those inappropriate words. And we could run into First Amendment problems if we can't identify who these people are. Because if you don't have to to attach your name to it. You're free to say a lot of stuff that you wouldn't necessarily say in person or with your name online, as we've seen repeatedly in social media.
Does Wheat Ridge Speaks allow for anonymous commenting?
Not that I'm aware of, but it's it's two more questions I need to go and investigate, Lauren Mikulak and Alison Shrek. Have been extremely helpful to me on in this effort and I will go back and have further conversations with them about those issues.
Ally, did, maybe, Ally, can you speak to that, I thought we required speak commentators to leave their name and address? In Wheat Ridge Speaks, no?
We do, my understanding is that that isn't necessarily visible to the public, it's on the back end.
Gotcha.
Yeah, but it is a required field, that's my understanding, Patrick, when they fill it out.
Yes, however, if I am not the leader in the city and I go in to read them.
Gotcha.
The identity is expunged.
Well, I think that that's a fine process for the Wheat Ridge Speaks platform as it stands, but once that information's entered into the minutes of a city council meeting. I think that their first and last name and their address should be entered into that information. Because that's, you know, a critical record of our proceedings and if we just have John Jane Doe. You know, it just doesn't, the comment isn't worth anything unless we know who said it.
Well, and of course, the other thing is, we have certain individuals who repeat the same comments again and again and again, whatever issue you want to name.
Yeah.
Body who has not commented on something before is saying the same thing or just parroting what they've heard or repeating what they've said.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy, has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have to apologize, first off, the screen died on my computer tonight, so I'll be stopping for a new computer. Then I got on on my phone and it ran out of battery, so I had to run into my house to get a cord, so I'm very sorry I took everybody on a tour. But I do want to say that as as I, a few things, first off, as I understand it. From the study session and from both going into Wheat Ridge Speaks under my logged-in name. And then also under, just just to look at how it looks as, when we're logged in, it's called the decision makers. Screen, and I also wanted to see how it looked for the public, so I I tend to look in both ways. And I believe there, only the decision makers see the address, however. The name is attached to the bottom of the comment for the commenters, so I just wanted to bring that up. Also. I agree that they should be in the minutes and I agree that we should not read them. Into the record for a few reasons, you know, potentially you could end up with some double dip. You read it into the record and then also somebody calls in and and it's the same thing. Also, you could end up with, they write too much and you wouldn't be able to get that read in within three minutes. And so then that would be unfair to those who have called in and they are listed specifically to three minutes. And and then also, if if we have an extensive amount of input on an issue. Both in person and in writing, someone could be on the very bottom of the list with the last name of Z. And we could potentially make it unavailable for them to be able to stick it out to do their comments. Because it could run so late, so so those are the reasons why I support not reading them into the record, but having them in the record. And and I I'm totally fine with. Having to affirm that we've read them at the beginning of the meetings or at the beginning of the public hearings or both. Or I'm totally fine with at the beginning of citizen comment, the mayor could say. Also, please look at Wheat Ridge Speaks for comments that have been made from our citizenry online. And seven of nine council members have already read those, so I I'm okay with any of those. So I just want to say, thanks you guys for bringing this up, I know it's important too, we are looking and we. I staff, I want to say thank you very much for all the hard work you've done in in helping us create more availability for our citizens. To to be engaged into our processes after talking to some other communities. I feel like we have some, we are really ahead of the game as far as the all the opportunities we're giving our citizens, especially in this time right now. And so I just want to say, thank you to everybody for working on this.
Thank you, Ms. Nosler back and then Ms. Check.
I just wanted to know if in someone's public comment, they said something along the lines of. You know, I can't make it to the council meeting tonight, will someone please read this into the record? Would there be flexibility in whatever we decide to do to to do that, if they're if they're specifically request that? Because I know that people do reach out to us directly as city council people, but I do like the accessibility of Wheat Ridge Speaks. For people to. You know, just click on a link and they don't have to necessarily know who their city council person is or whatever to participate and have their voice heard.
But you know, I I, it occurs to me that if council have read the comments and they see somebody in their district who has said, could you please read this into? The record, then you could make that same decision that Mr. Stites makes when he gets a letter from a constituent. As you did last week, of course, with Sunny Garcia's comments, so I think that's really pretty simple. It's your right to read those into the record if as a member, if you wish to, and you can certainly do that.
On council rules speaks to that.
Yes.
And maybe Mr. Dahl could answer that question also.
Sure, thanks, you folks can hear me, I assume?
Yes, and thank you.
Great, great, thank you, yeah, the council rules do speak to that and it's been a rule that you've had for decades. And that's that written comments are permitted, but they have to be given to the city clerk and the reading of the comments isn't permitted. Unless there's someone there to read them, a council member is allowed to read them or the city clerk can read them. But only if the council votes to allow that to happen, you know, the the genesis of that rule. Which, as I say, has been around for a long time, was to ensure that that there weren't sort of just long letters. That that got read into the record rather than someone making the effort to show up at the meeting. And here now, of course, you can show up at the meeting either in person or virtually to to make your citizens' right to speak. Comment on that part of the agenda and and I guess what I would want to emphasize for the the council is you have the citizens' right to speak. Category of ways that people can reach you and that is that they actually show up or they log in. And they they make that statement kind of live, the exception to that is this reading a written comment into the record. Under the council rules, under the limited rules that I just mentioned, the three minutes, if it's a council member reading it, you've got to all agree. That's one category of ways to reach you, maybe what is confusing, but in a good way. Is that Wheat Ridge Speaks has created, when you think about it, a new category of ways to reach the council. I agree with council member Stites that, I think, maybe he didn't say it this way, but I'll say it this way. Wheat Ridge Speaks, the idea probably isn't, I think it might be well to avoid making everything kind of a lowest common denominator. In other words, every communication, no matter how received, Wheat Ridge Speaks, a letter, somebody showing up at a meeting for. For citizens' right to speak, now is subject to the same rules and everything goes into the record no matter how received. You know, you can certainly do that, but that will vastly change, as council members Stites and others have pointed out. The the size of your of your record, so where I think you're likely headed is. That if you want to do citizens' right to speak, there's there's plenty of ways to do that, now you can do it virtually and so do that. If you want something writ read into the record, you've got a council rule on that. If it's simply you're accessing the the new way of reaching council through Wheat Ridge Speaks, that's great. Council will see that, you can choose for yourselves whether you want to acknowledge on the record that you've read or not. You can make that part of your citizens' right to speak package of of rules and and fine. And in the end, whatever comes in on citizens' right to speak does get made a part of the record of that meeting. And if it's a public hearing per what the city clerk mentioned, it gets made a part of the hearing record. In no different way than if people had written a letter to the Community Development Department to say, I want this a part of the hearing record on the rezoning case. We do that already and there really isn't a a need to change that rule. So I I guess I'd encourage you to think about citizens' right to speak and the rules around that as a separate package of ways. People's reach you in a much more direct way and you've set that up to be kind of personal and and live. Versus the Wheat Ridge Speaks way of reaching you, which isn't as personal, isn't as live, but is is important. But it's it's kind of got its own set of rules and you might want to try to keep them somewhat separate.
Mr. Kirkpatrick, do you have any more, I assume that we're now on agenda item number five, A, procedures for sharing. And have you got, have you, have you received the information or the comments back from the council that you were looking for?
I have, and I want to thank council for that, I also, under elected officials' matters. Want to repeat our undying gratitude to a long list of people, you know who they all are, the city staff, the first responders, the police department. The people who take away our garbage, the people who bring our groceries to the car. And the hundreds of other people who work in critical businesses that repair our air conditioners, et cetera. I don't think any of them are listening right now, or very few of them, what I found is it's very, very helpful. When you run into one of those people, they're just look them in the eye and say, thanks. It makes their day and I think we all ought to do that every time we get a chance.
Well said, thank you, I had I had Ms. Check and then Ms. Holtein lined up.
Thanks, Mayor, I just wanted to, I found the clarification I was looking for to councillor Urban's question about addresses. So I just want to read this to you, it's an awesome, just quick summary from from Lauren Mikulak. It says, commenters are asked to provide their full name and address in Wheat Ridge Speaks. Addresses are visible to decision makers, so addresses are visible to you all from your dashboard. But for privacy reasons, they're not visible to the general public, addresses are visible in the PDF export for the city clerk's official record. So I think that's what you're all asking for.
And the and the name, the name is also visible in the public record.
Correct.
Thank you, thank you for your clarification, Ms. Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so I I'm in agreement with everyone around getting them in the record. And having some sort of affirmation process, in particular with the hearings, one point of clarification I just want to include is. When we are including them in the minutes, instead of just doing an addendum or an attachment with the PDF of all the comments. Across all of the topic matters that we are actually inserting, if we can, the comments in. With the agenda item that they're commenting on, and I just share that as someone who has spent a lot of time in. And I just share that as someone who has spent a lot of time in our archives and reading old minutes. The citizen comment around the topic is important. So I think if it was all in an addendum, people might not actually read it that way. So if we could make sure that it is attached to its actual item in the minutes, that would be really helpful.
And the, the issue we'll have with that is very often, whether they're speaking live at the council meeting or putting a comment in Wheat Ridge Speaks, people address several issues in one comment. We've had speakers on Wheat Ridge Speaks who's talked about three or four different issues, some of which are on the agenda and some of which aren't. That creates a slippery slope for the clerk's office in terms of how do I decide whether this comment is relevant to that or whatever. Now, I'm happy to do it, but the, the problem then becomes, did I treat somebody fairly by deciding which item to attach their comments?
Pardon me, we've been over two hours. So I'm gonna, we're gonna have to take a short break right now. Okay. So it's about 20 minutes to nine. We'll convene in about eight minutes. Oh, Ms. Dozeman, I've got. Perhaps Ms. Dozeman is playing teacher right now. In our meeting, we are on agenda item number five, elected officials reports, talking still about the procedure for sharing comments on Wheat Ridge Speaks. And I had Mr. Stites in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think piggybacking off what Ms. Hulteen said and what Mr. Kirkpatrick had responded to, I know that was a few minutes ago. Would it be possible, because people are, are commenting on the Wheat Ridge Speaks website. When they do that, they're commenting under specific categories usually. There's the general and they may just put it in there, in which case it should just go in there possibly. But if it's, if it's specifically under a certain comment or a specific agenda item, maybe it should go specifically under that section in the minutes.
That's very easy to do. The issue becomes the comments that are totally unrelated to any agenda item tonight or something that was discussed three weeks ago, or will be discussed in three weeks. All I'm trying to avoid is a situation where in an effort to be inclusive and transparent, we appear to do the opposite.
Well, I would say that it's, when they put it in their own category, it's just like when somebody comes to a meeting and signs up under a specific agenda item, that's where it goes. So they're self-selecting in that case. I don't think we need to make very much correction at all.
Mr. Dahl would like to speak to this also.
Mr. Dahl.
Yeah, I, I've learned from, from Ally that, that when comments do come in, that they're capable of being separated, even when there's more than one, one topic addressed by a commenter on Wheat Ridge, on, on Wheat Ridge Speaks. So we can easily separate that text and import it into the minutes in the appropriate location. And to speak to the issue that the city clerk just raised about the kind of odd orphan, hard to assign comment. Councilmember Stites is right. People self-assign and they can, they can, they can feel it's relevant to the topic or not, but that's, that's, that's how they've categorized it. If it's simply impossible, there's always, there's two choices. We can either put it under citizens' right to speak, which is by its nature a general category, and that's fine. Or in the, in the very rare, rare case, and I'm not worried about it, there can be a, a statement at the end. There was an additional comment which didn't appear to be located under any particular agenda item, but it was received on such and such a day. Here's what, here's what it was. And that can be injected in the minutes in the rare case that that, that happens. I talked with Ally and I think the, the good thing to do is we'll test run this for the next couple sets of minutes and, and see how that works. But apparently the text is easily moved and we'll put it as councilmember Stites says in the category. People say that they think it's, that's why I'm talking about it. That's the topic, I think, as a speaker that it's relevant to. So you put it in.
Outstanding. That's what we'll do. I, remember Hulteen for bringing that up. You're muted.
Sorry, it's totally different on the phone. I just wanted to mention that the, they're basically the same thing that Mr. Dahl just said, but also there have been some things that have, since we've been doing the Zoom meetings that have come up kind of last minute. And the reason why we've been putting them, typically you don't see something under like elected officials reports or under staff reports specifically. And the reason why we've been doing that is so that citizens will have opportunity to comment on that, which is why like this is under elected, this topic's under elected officials reports, but there was no staff memo attached to it because it was added, it was asked to be added past the deadline of when things have to be turned in to staff to get staff memos. So when you go to Wheat Ridge Speaks, you can speak on any, like with the study session on, you can make comment on any item that's on the agenda. And so if somebody wanted to make comment on this topic that we're speaking about, it was under elected officials reports and they had the opportunity to comment on this agenda item. And we've done that in a couple of past meetings. And so I just wanted to bring up that we are giving opportunity for citizens' comment in this time of not being able to see them out in public on a regular basis.
Thank you. Any more discussion on the Wheat Ridge Speaks item that was, that was on our agenda? Okay, we're still on elected officials report. Do any of our, our elected officials have a report that they would like to make? And I'll recognize Ms. Hoppy. If you would like to make one, please raise your hand.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to alert everybody to this Thursday, the 7th. The Family Tree has been, for 27 years, they've been doing their celebration of achievement and recognizing former clients that benefit from Family Tree services and have discovered their own strengths to create lasting and positive change. This is their largest fundraiser and it's, it's one of my favorites because they have clients who come and tell their story and we get to celebrate their, their moving into being safe, strong and self-reliant. And this year, because of what's going on with the COVID-19, their events are going to be held virtually. Typically you have to pay to have a ticket to sit at the table. But this year it will be free because it's going to be virtual. They also have a really amazing silent action, like most, like the stuff they have and their silent action is awesome, awesome stuff. Like, you know, trips to Hawaii, which you would have to take later, you know, stuff like that. So I would really encourage people to go to The Family Tree online. And you can, you can register for their Zoom event because they're doing it through Zoom and they're going to be doing the action through Zoom. Or go to The Family Tree, their Facebook page, and you can register there and, and be a part of their, of their, again, their, their largest fundraiser. And, and our hopes, it's, it's a significant part of their budget. And so our hopes this year that we'll still be able to really make a, a financial impact even while we are pivoting and changing the way that happens. So I would really hope, I hope that, that people will go check that out.
Thank you very much. Additional elected officials reports. Raise your hand. Nothing, nothing further tonight. Ms. Hulteen.
Can't believe I almost forgot this. Happy May the Fourth be with you. I've been drinking from my Darth Vader glass tonight. So one of my favorite days of the year and how appropriate to celebrate with some of my favorite people. So enjoy, enjoy the last of May the Fourth be with you.
Okay, thank you so much. And with all of our citizens out there in Wheat Ridge land. And you, anyone else? Well, I want to thank you all for joining us tonight, members of council, staff and, and members of the public. If you were able to join us, I'd like to extend a thank you to our presenters tonight, Christian LeBron and Lily Griege with the Census. Thank you very much to Dr. Tom Johnson for coming and reporting on the. very much to Dr. Tom Johnson for coming and reporting on the progress we're making on the COVID-19 response, and to Ms. Karen O'Donnell and her team for putting together a great Parks and Recreation program and, and telling us about that tonight. As always, thank you to Ally Scheck and her team for putting on this virtual, virtual con, virtual city council study session, I guess is what we're calling it. So we, we're, we're making strides in this, in staying home and, and wearing face coverings when we're out in critical businesses. I want to express my appreciation to all of the citizens out there for the great work that they're doing. We're, we're making progress on battling this, this pandemic virus, and hopefully we will be out of the, out of the emergency soon. So hang in there, we're, we're making progress. Thank you all for joining us tonight. We will be back on Zoom one week tonight for a regular city council meeting. So in the meantime, stay safe, stay healthy, and thank you so much. With that, we will adjourn. Thank you. Bye-bye.